This meeting is called to order at six o'clock. Please stay seated for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. We are being broadcast live or at least shot off to YouTube Live. Live at this point in time. Clerk Wright, could you please call the roll? You're on mute.
Okay, trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee White. It's not in yet. Clerk Wright is present. Treasury Butt.
Here.
Supervisor Magno.
Here.
We have a call on.
Thank you. I'll go to the executive summary of the agenda day. The consent agenda consists of the board meeting minutes, the prepaid minutes and the voucher lists. There is also an appointment from Brian Cullen. He's going to the Planning Commission. There's also reappointments for Kevin Boyer, Juanita Jensen, Harry Roche, and Peggy Young as the alternate, and those are our Board of Review members. Every year we have to redo that. We have an approval of a corrected 2021 holiday schedule. New business today will include discussion of the first reading of an ordinance to limit medical marijuana caregiving activities to residences. Also, we'll be discussing Resolution 2022, which is to adopt the Van Buren Township Master Plan and discussion on resolution for the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan. We will also be advising the Board of the new COVID, Township COVID-19 protocols pursuant to the state of Michigan guidelines that are coming into effect tomorrow. At the end of the meeting, I was hoping to give, say goodbye to Mr. White, and I was going to wait till that time to do it. Next section is adoption of the revised agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the revised agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the revised agenda.
Thank you. Frazier, trustee Miller, Frazier. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Wright, please. I think that's ridiculous. We have to do roll call and everything, but.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee White is excused. Yes, for me. Treasury Butt.
Yes.
Supervisor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Who wants to read a lot?
I'm happy to read the adoption.
Making a motion for approval. Please make the motion.
Supervisor, I make the motion to the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Board meeting minutes of October 20, 2020, prepaid list of October 22, 2020, prepaid list of October 29, 2020, prepaid list November 3, 2020, election worker pay through Monday, prepaid list November 3, 2020, election worker pay through Tuesday, prepaid list of November 5, 2020, prepaid list of November 12, 2020, voucher list of November 3, 2020, voucher list of November 17, 2020, approval of the appointment of Brian Cullen to the Planning Commission and the Board and the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Hold on. Hold on. He was not to the Board of Zoning Appeals. That was the change. So just to let you know.
Approval of the appointment of Brian Cullen to the Planning Commission.
That's it.
Okay, with the term to expire October 1, 2021. Correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, approval of the reappointments of Kevin Boyer, Juanita Jensen, Harry Roche, and Penny Young, who's the alternate to the Board of Review with terms to expire December 31, 2022. Approval of the corrected 2021 holiday schedule.
Support.
Okay, trustee Martin. Consent agenda. So hearing no further discussion, Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Trustee White is absent. Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Treasury Butt.
Yes.
Yes, for me. Supervisor Magno.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now down to correspondence, announcements, and presentations. I'd like to begin with Susan Iron from the DDA with exciting news for us. Moderator, bring Susan in.
Yep. Susan, you are in. You can unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you like.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Hi Susan, good evening.
How are you tonight?
Good to see you.
Good to see you all. I actually have some information, which I think is probably really nice. Michigan Downtown Association recently recognized Harris Park located on Bellevue Road as the 2020 Best Placemaking Project in the state. And as you all know, it's a community amenity within the heart of our business district. And it has, it features things like the free Wi-Fi, and it's got the walking paths, the doggy stations, tables, pavilions. I don't know if anybody noticed that we've put up lights in there this year. And this was an award that was presented to us at the virtual conference that we did this year, November 5th and 6th. And I am extremely pleased that the MDA saw the merit of this placemaking project and chose to honor the legacy of the Harris family. Secondly, I really would like to take a moment to extend my sincere gratitude and commend the Van Buren Township Board of Trustees and the DDA Board for their vision and their commitment to excellence in Van Buren Township. And last but not least, I would like to actually thank the Van Buren Civic Fund too, because we've been a little bit fortunate this year. With their help, they partnered with the Township and the DDA. We were able to do the park splash pad in the playground, which then actually resulted in us getting an award of the 2020 Park Design Award by the Michigan Recreation of Parks Association. So, so in a strange year of COVID, I think we've done okay.
We're winning awards for best in the state. I love that. Thank you.
Very good.
Flash park now to the placemaking park. Great.
Please make sure you look at the, as you drive by at night, look at the lights.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, we have forgotten harvest again, and I'm going to bring it up because on November 24th, we'll have another forgotten harvest food giveaway. The biggest problem we have is that they are wrapping cars around this building. It is amazing. Hundreds of cars showed up today and they got lots and lots of food. It's meant to remove the stigma of signing up for all these programs, but quite frankly, there's a lot of people out there that really need these programs. They're just afraid to go out and sign up for them. Get over there. It's not hard. You just give them your name and address, and if you're hurting, they'll take care of you. We seem to be, a knack for blood, Red Cross blood drive. They came here again and they, another 36 people signed up and filled all their slots, and that's blood for over 100 patients. And so we are, they sent us a nice little letter thanking us again. So we're going to try and keep on doing that. My big presentation though is on the COVID. So does anybody else have any announcements or presentations to make at this time? Leon, you might. Yeah.
Are you ready for it?
Yeah.
About 30 minutes. Just kidding. Okay, yeah, I want to just give a recap on the historic 2020 COVID elections. I want to, I want to begin by thanking the voters of Van Buren Township for honoring me with the privilege to serve as a township clerk for another four years. I'm optimistic and excited for the future of Van Buren Township and what accomplishment this newly elected board will bring. On November 3, 2020, we had a 70.7% of our registered voters in the township made their voices heard by casting absentee ballot while going to the poll. Never before in the history of this country has turnout been so high. Personally, I'm most impressed by our young people. I've always been passionate about educating our youth about elections and encouraging the youth to participate. This election brought out 69.3% of our registered voters between the age of 18 and 21. As a story, it never happened before, and I'm just happy to see that they're being, they're coming out and being a part of democracy. I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to thank my clerk's office staff, DPW staff, HR Director Sumter, Van Buren Public Schools, and the election workers. This election was one of the most difficult my staff has ever faced. Yet they showed up day after day, working nonstop until until every voter was served and every ballot was counted. Our DPW staff had it handled, set up and tear down all the equipment with a very limited time window due to COVID-19 restrictions within our schools. Again, HR Director Sumter stood in the front lobby day after day directing traffic. So over thousands and thousands of voter could enter and exit the building safely. The Van Buren Public School District, along with Wayne County Community School, graciously opened their doors to the clerk's office and the community. A special thanks goes out to our election workers. We had an overwhelming interest in working the polls this year and were first time, especially with first time election inspector. They did an outstanding job. I'm proud to report that the hard work and preparation of that entire team paid off. Van Buren Township was the first, the first in Wayne County municipality to report 100% of their results to the county on election night. In conclusion, I would like to take a second to reassure our voters on the integrity of the process. We've all heard or seen rumors floating around in the news and social media that may have, that may leave you with questions. There's no validity to these claims. Elections are organized and held by each municipality individually. The equipment is tested and prepared, one group while software programming is done by another. These are just some of the many checks and balances required when conducting elections in the state of Michigan. Finally, the election results are canvassed and certified by both the county and the state level. The pins that were used on election night was tested and certified by the manufacturer of election equipment and the state of Michigan. There was no credible evidence of issues due to these pins or any other use to mark ballots. Any voter interested in seeing their ballot was, whether their ballot was tabulated is welcome to find out. Absentee voters can check their ballot by going to their famous website, And voters that voted at the polls and fed their ballots through the tabulators may contact the clerk for a copy of their voting record. Again, I am, what I'm most, most satisfied with the voters turning out and casting the ballots, making the historic election, not only in Van Buren Township, but throughout the country. I'm most ecstatic by seeing the turnout of our youth, because that never happened before. We normally didn't get them, they wouldn't be engaged. And to see them turn out at a 68% rate is just incredible. I'd also like to thank Bob and Marie Kraus, the cemetery flags, and also like to announce that the township will be closed Thursday, November 26th, and Friday, November 27th, in service of Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have any announcements or presentations that they want to make before I go to the COVID report? Okay, well, last year, this year, it's kind of been a long year. This year, the Board tasked me with making the management decisions required to safeguard the public and the employees and to follow the state mandates. And I promised I would diligently come back to you with any reports of any changes in policies or in respect to COVID. Obviously, the state through the Office of the Governor, the Health Department, MIOSHA, they just issued a whole bunch of new directives. We've gone through those for the last two days. And quite, and we're, I'm going to give you what we're going to do to basically live up to those mandates. They are effective tomorrow. We put nine months into this plan that we've got right now. I am proposing the following policy as a response. We're going to do what worked last time. We probably failed five times in a row before we got it right and discovered that splitting the ship was the way to go. So we're going to split the ship into the workforce into two teams. Non-directors work their shifts and isolate themselves from the, excuse me. Last time, we simply split the workforce into two teams. The last time, we had the non-directors. They worked remotely. The problem was that everything was driven by the non-directors being the only ones that could work remotely, and they had to work their tails off to keep the thing working. And a lot of work got backed up. You've got a workforce of 50 people and only 10 people trying to keep it up, but it doesn't last that long. The only reason it did work, quite frankly, was because the economy was shut down and there wasn't that much, not many people coming through the doors. Well, when they started the economy up, people really wanted our services. And quite frankly, we fell behind fast because construction permits went through the roof, requests for information. We had a national election that was unparalleled. The Treasurer's Office was to boot because everybody was sitting on old bills that they were just ramrodded to get through. But we did do one thing that was pretty smart. We took that COVID money that we got, grant money, and we started, we accelerated our computer updates. Anybody that had a desktop computer that needed a new up, a new computer ended up with a remote laptop computer, for the most part. And because of that, we also rechanged our modules. We learned about modules that we had, we didn't even know about for remote use. And we ended up, somebody's got a radio on in the background. And what we ended up doing was we ended up creating an actually viable remote workforce. Our employees now can remote, can remotely work probably 70% of the stuff that we do. At any rate, workers that are, so way it's going to work basically is workers that are not in the building are going to be assigned work at home. They will interact with office-based personnel and produce building permits. Who has, who has their?
Somebody's getting interfered. You probably need to put your.
It's really annoying. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Put it on mute when you're not talking.
Yeah, everybody. Sherry, could you go on? Okay, thank you. Okay, so workers that are not working in the building and they're working from home, they're going to be assigned work. They will interact with the office-based personnel, and they will produce, they will produce things like building permits, plot drawings, purchase orders, and even process payroll. They will print to the building printers where they're in, where there are people that are in building counterparts that will assure what needs to happen happens next. The construction permit will be delivered, a bill will get paid, water pressure stabilized. Well, that's pretty much done already that way. A foil will be mailed. Every single phone call will be returned. Every email will be returned. All phones will divert messages from their desktop phones to their laptops. We have that capability. The offsite worker will hear the voicemail and they'll contact their party same day. So again, we're going to be going to a split system. The employee hours will continue to be Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:00. The doors, however, will be only open from 10 to 3:00. This is to allow our employees uninterrupted time to complete the work on their desk and properly close out the day and set up the next shift. The framework of this plan, the preamble, the framework that was asked to make this plan right was that we will be open to the public. All calls and emails will be answered or returned on a daily basis. All township services will continue to be provided. We will comply with those state MIOSHA safety standards. We will comply with the new state mandates, and we will provide for the safety of our employees and the public. This plan takes effect tomorrow. That is my due diligence of the day. I am done. Anybody have a comment? Trustee Martin, I thought I saw your hand raised. Yep, okay. All right.
Supervisor, I have a couple of questions, if I may. So, I know we've been upgraded to a level two. So if you look back to where we were in March, and our numbers are off the charts ridiculously high. Are we in line for where we were in March to today?
No, we're having, you know, in March, we didn't have very good testing. But if you, if you look at the testing that was being done, we are higher now.
Correct. And because we are so high, my concern is how long will we, will we be able to be open to the public in keeping our, our staff safe as well? What is the plan going forward to monitor that? And what is the next phase of this? Because it's not going to get better.
Okay, so I agree with you there. That's why we're going to this plan, because I believe that this plan is a sustainable plan to give, to give safety to our employees, to residents, and to maintain full services going forward for months and months and months. I believe it's sustainable. But right now, you know, we don't have a very, there's not many people getting in here at all. We've got very good systems in place. We check at the door. We sanitize, steam sanitize. We wear masks around each other. We're six feet. We're really good. But yes, people are coming in, and they may have it. And if somebody gets in here, the thought, you know, we're still, even though we're distancing, somebody else could get it. We hope that we put it into check in time. If we have to close and it gets that bad, the governor's going to be the one that makes us close. But if we have to close, we close. But I think that this is sustainable.
Okay, so are we still keeping the senior department closed and also Parks and Rec?
Yes, and the seniors are extremely adamant that they want to come back into our building. God love them. They want to start working out and they want to start walking. But I'm sorry, I cannot do that. Parks and Rec programs, people want Parks and Rec programs back. I cannot do that. But we are still operating the senior department because we're contacting seniors that are home and nobody's watching over them. I mean, they, they may need help falling. I can't get up for days if we don't call them on a regular basis and make sure they're okay. We have food giveaway programs that we're accelerating. They're bigger than they've ever been. Just they're scary how big they are. I almost wish they weren't in our building because of the fact that I don't, we're getting to the point where we're having difficulty handling the volume of people that are coming through. They're not coming into the building. It's all done outside. But, yeah, so, so, yes, they're, they're actually working a lot in the seniors area and recreation is shut down.
All right. Thank you for keeping us on top of this. And I also, I'm sure the Board wants to be a part of this process as well going forward. And those COVID updates that you give daily are very important, but they're also very alarming. And we need to get those out to the public. So, and they need to be shareable, supervisor. Right now, you can't share them. They're in a PDF file. And you got to count on other elected officials in other areas who might capture our data that, and then we're able to send it out. And I find that unacceptable. These reports should be on social media. We should, as community leaders, advocate and make people aware of just how bad this COVID is.
Part of the new COVID response is Communications Department has been directed to basically go tell the public how bad this is, and we're going to call businesses like we did about three months ago and say, hey, listen, if you're not wearing a mask, we're coming after you, blah, blah. But what you just said is a great idea, and I'm going to ask something to incorporate that.
Thank you so much.
Through the chair. They have been on Facebook, Reggie. I don't know if you've noticed them there, but they've been out there pretty regularly. Every time we get one, I've noticed they, they have been on Facebook. But yeah, I don't know why we just don't put them on our Facebook.
Exactly. That way they can be shared in the community, and the community can keep track of how high these numbers are going.
Right.
We all have to do our part. And assist with the Facebook COVID reports.
Treasurer, Sherry Frazier, you're muted. Unmute. You'll see a button that says unmute.
Unmute.
There you go.
Miracles. Well, I just want to say I appreciate that we're being proactive and we're keeping our residents safe. That's the most important thing. And we need to get the communication out there. I agree with trustee Miller that whatever we can do to keep our residents informed is the best way to go. So that they can take responsibility for their own actions. It takes everybody working when you have a pandemic, working together in order to conquer a pandemic.
Yeah, I did not add public safety, but public safety runs are unfortunately back to what they were pre-COVID. So there will be no cuts or no changes to public safety. Dispatch or fire. Fire is obviously our frontline for emergency medical. They are going to maintain full shifts like they have all through this. We have, the Board in its infinite wisdom adjusted their budget to allow them to do that. And that's what they're going to continue doing. Anybody else? Okay, we're moving on then. Next item of business is public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on the items of today? Moderator?
I'm not seeing any at this time, supervisor.
Thank you. There is no unfinished business, so we're going to move right into our first reading of an ordinance. We have an ordinance who would like to make, who would like to back this ordinance for, I'm sorry, marijuana caregivers. This is to basically eliminate them to, from expanding into commercial areas. Sherry Frazier, trustee Frazier, could you read that as a first ordinance?
Certainly. Discussion and to consider approval of the first reading of ordinance 111721 to limit medical marijuana caregiver activities authorized under Michigan Initiated Law 1 of 2008. The amendments will be to Section 2.102, definitions, specific terms, and Article 7, general provisions.
Support.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a motion to support. Director Powers, could you please speak on this issue? Then we're going to make a law. Angela Manorino, are you the ones who's going to speak on it?
No, Dan is going to be handling it.
Before you get started, Sherry Frazier, do you?
Yes.
Do you still have your phone connected? Are you still getting, the feedback is coming?
No. Do I still have what? My phone?
You had your phone on earlier. You're getting feedback whenever you.
I am. I don't know. I don't even.
Hit your mute button then. Thank you. Dan, are you going to speak?
Okay, thank you. Yes. Thank you, Board, for having me. I will just give a broad overview of the content and the process behind this proposed ordinance. I also have Angela Manorino, our Township Attorney, here to assist as well if there's any questions about this proposed ordinance. The Township of Van Buren operates under three main laws that guide the use or regulation of marijuana in the state of Michigan. Recent years, we've had the 2016 law that enabled medical marijuana facilities as a more commercial or industrial use related to medical marijuana. The Township opted out of allowing those facilities. The 2018 voter-initiated law enabled recreational marijuana establishments. The Township also opted out of those. But since 2008, communities throughout Michigan have also fallen under the umbrella of the 2008 voter-initiated law that allows medical marijuana caregivers as individuals who cultivate marijuana plants for medical use, for medical marijuana patients. Communities throughout the state have operated under that law, largely guided by the same rules. There are certain limits on how many plants can be cultivated per patient with limits on the number of patient per caregiver. And by and large, those activities have been understood to be enabled sort of universally by state law. However, this year, there was a upheld court case called Byron Township versus DeRider where Byron Township on the west side of the state had successfully upheld an ordinance that limits medical marijuana caregiving to. to residential uses as an accessory use in, um, essentially, uh, the, the types of areas that are enabled by the act, but also, uh, with limits on the floor, uh, with limits on the, uh, location within a dwelling and as, uh, as being allowed only in the dwelling or the attached or the detached garage. And, um, this ordinance was also, uh, limiting the, uh, medical marijuana cultivation and other use to residential as opposed to non-residential properties. Um, and with, with, uh, on the heels of this decision, with feedback from officials from public services and public safety in the township, as well as, um, with, uh, with from some preliminary discussions with, uh, with township leadership. We thought that this was a good approach for the township to take as well, knowing that we can sensibly limit the medical marijuana caregiving activities in the township. We thought it was prudent to make sure that we are, uh, using whatever we have at our disposal to make sure that, uh, this activity is limited to residential properties. Uh, as has been widely, I think, understood to be a, a policy of the township. But we, knowing that we, we can, uh, make sure that there are safeguards against this moving into commercial or industrial spaces. We want to make sure that we uphold those, those limits. So the ordinance that you have is, um, fairly similar to the one that was up, actually very similar to the one that was upheld by the Supreme Court. And it limits, um, the cultivation or other use of medical marijuana to residential properties only. It limits the floor area devoted to, uh, medical marijuana cultivation or, uh, other use to three hundred square feet or twenty percent of the dwelling, whichever is less. And, uh, has limits on, um, there, there being one caregiver in the dwelling. And, um, functionally upholds a policy that the township, I think, has, uh, had in mind since they uh, ruled out having facilities in commercial or industrial sites. We now are, have the ability to make sure that we solidify that in an ordinance. Um, so that's the, the, the basic overview of the ordinance. We are not allowed to prohibit, um, medical marijuana caregivers under the two thousand and eight law, but we are allowed to limit the scope and the location of where it can occur. So that's what we're proposing to do with guidance from our, uh, public safety and public services, um, departments. So procedurally, this is a zoning ordinance text amendment. We had a public hearing with the planning commission on this amendment on October fourteenth with the recommendation of the township board, uh, at that same meeting. And now this is the first of two readings of this ordinance. So if you have any questions, uh, myself or Angela would be glad to, uh, answer them.
I have some questions, if I may, super supervisor. So I, I don't want to prohibit. I certainly understand the need of the caregiver here with the medical marijuana. How many plants are, are, are allowed per household, per caregiver? And I am concerned and residents have told me that there's a smell in certain areas of the township. I'm sure all of you during the summer have drove by and you smell marijuana. Don't, can't see where it's coming from, but it's coming from somewhere. And if there's only a certain amount of plants, what is it? And how are we addressing that situation? Because everyone has a right to enjoy their property and their homes and that's equally of concern here.
Sure, so, uh, I, I can take a, uh, uh, first stab at that. So the, uh, two thousand and eight law allows caregivers to grow up to twelve plants per patient. And then with, uh, with fi- up to five patients. And then if there is a patient in the household of the caregiver, they can also have twelve plants. Now, the.
Well, wait a minute, if I may, go back. So five, they can take care of five patients. Twelve plants per patient, correct? So that five times twelve plants is how many?
That's sixty plants.
I'm sorry?
Six, sixty plants plus, uh, up to an additional twelve if there's a patient that the caregiver.
That's a lot of plants for one home. So how are we addressing? I, I, and I understand that, but we as a township should also address the, the right to enjoy people's property as well. So how are we, uh, looking at that? That's equally important here.
So that's a really good question. One of the really important aspects of the ordinance that was upheld in Byron Township that we are, um, sort of tailoring to Van Buren Township is that there can be limits on the floor area that's, or the, uh, the area that is devoted to growing or cultivating or using medical marijuana. And so we have a, a pretty stringent rule that, that it, um, has to be limited to three hundred square feet or twenty percent of the dwelling, whichever is less. So, uh, well, if you can grow all the plants that are authorized under the act, you are allowed to do so. You still have to contain it within that area. There are all, there are also, uh, provisions in the ordinance, which, uh, the actual ordinance language begins on page one twelve of your packet. Uh, and there are provisions in there, uh, about, uh, nuisances and, and, uh, items of odor and other enforceable, um, items that we can investigate if there is a complaint.
Okay, so that being said, um, director power, so if there is a smell or someone has a complaint, but they're under the the auspices of this, this ordinance and they're, you know, they're following the rules. They've got their, you know, five patients and they're allowed twelve plants apiece, but there's an odor problem. There is a way to go back to this ordinance and address it. I don't want the, the resident to be high and dry going, sorry, we're following the law. There's nothing we can do here for you as a resident, you know? I want to know, I want the public to know, there are residents to know that that's not the case here. There's things that in this ordinance that addresses that.
In past ordinances, this ordinance would be a different ordinance than that, but we do have nuisance laws. Miss Manorino's actually prosecuted some of those for us. Could you speak on that?
Yes, so, I mean, the next one of the, you know, the difficulties with having having marijuana be, you know, in this semi-legal state is that, you know, in areas where, you know, residences are close together, there are issues with noise, with light, with odor. Um, we have handled some of those issues previously and it's something that this, you know, ordinance and what the, the Supreme Court in Byron Township upheld is to allow us to enforce those, so we can balance the, you know, the concerns of the people who are, you know, medical marijuana caregivers with their neighbors who have a right to also enjoy their property. And so this kind of allows us to balance it and, and protect everyone.
Mute. Reggie, you're muted.
I have a question. I got a quick question. So the, uh.
My video, because I heard of, uh, I, there was feedback, but thank you. I appreciate your, your feedback.
Okay, thank you. Look right.
I just, uh, a quick question. So following up with what Reggie said. I mean, you're living in, living in a subdivision, you do. And if you out and be active, like, and you're walking and running, you can't, you get a powerful contact by running, when you run by some of these homes. So, uh, they are real, real strong. So twelve times five, that's sixty plants. So can you, so they can actually grow sixty plants?
It's seventy-two.
Uh, seventy-two plants in their basement? And so they, but if they're registered caregivers, don't they, they're registered by, they have to be registered by, with the state, right?
Right. Yes, there's, yeah, they're still required to follow all of the.
Right, so can't, can't we determine who's whether people are registered in that, in that area or not? Can you tell? Whether you have registered caregivers in a general area?
That's not information that we really have access to in terms of getting a list from the state of who in a particular subdivision is registered now.
Because, I mean, I, you know, I get it, you know, being a registered caregiver, but Reggie do have it. You have a legit, legitimate complaint there. It is awfully strong in some areas when you're walking by, all right, next door, if you're living next door to it. So, you know, I don't know.
Okay.
It's going, going to come up again. It's going to be a challenge for us.
He let, uh, okay, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement and Dan and Angela can tell me if my statement is correct. Because Dan talks like Ron. He, he, he talks planning ease and I think we're losing control of what we're supposed to be talking about. This ordinance is here because of the fact that a guy came to our town and went to a commercial building and told us he was gonna start growing medical marijuana. We cannot control medical marijuana in residential sites. It, state has made that very clear. All right, so, but this guy was going to move into a commercial area where we were an outdoor community, community. We told him, you know, and no, we told him politely, hell no. We then got, eh, within a half hour, got a phone call from an attorney who basically stated this court case and said, eh, too bad, you never, eh, you never limited medical marijuana to residences. And since you didn't limit it to residences, this court case allows us to build medical marijuana facilities in commercial and retail spaces. They could grow it at the gas station if they want. What we're trying to do here is say, okay, we admit we got to leave it in residences, residential, and we're going to put that right in here. We can't do anything about that. But that's the only place we're gonna allow it. Am I correcting what I'm saying, Angela and Dan? That bottom line, what we're doing here?
The, the ordinance is, is limiting the medical marijuana to residences and then putting restrictions on that that are consistent with what the Supreme Court of Michigan has upheld.
Thank you.
My understanding as well.
Yeah.
Uh, so one more question, I guess. Do we know, do we, do we have any, uh, areas considered a business that's growing it? Do we know of?
There is one business that is potentially could do this because they tried to do it before we did this, what we're doing today.
Su- supervisor, this is director boss. Can I add a few pieces to this?
Sure.
Um, there, the, the reason that we put together this ordinance, um, while, while there were some requests going on uh, on the planning side, this was really in response to our, um, fantastic law firm and Dave Greco, uh, bringing to our attention the Supreme Court's order. And we started working on this, uh, after the DeRider case was settled. So we were kind of working through this process. And very simply, uh, in the non-planning language, our biggest concern with, and the, and the, the real weakness in some of marijuana laws, it's non-settled yet. There's a lot of quasi-legal aspects to marijuana use. And the, uh, caregiver law has this exemption out there, this gray area that would allow a caregiver to purchase a commercial property and grow plants in that building. So if you can imagine next to Starbucks, somebody buying a commercial property space next to Starbucks and deciding to grow marijuana there under the caregiver law. The DeRider case allows the township to decide whether they are allowed to do that there or not. Currently, we have caregivers in residential space. We don't want to take that away. We want to put that into our ordinance, keep it in place and prevent somebody growing plants in our commercial districts, which we, we all know, we all love and enjoy as a community. Now, in terms of the, uh, the concerns that trustee Miller has, there is limits in this ordinance on the space allowed for growing of plants. I think it's three hundred and fifty feet. Is that correct, Angela?
Three hundred.
Square fi- three hundred square feet or something like that?
Three hundred, yes, or twenty percent, whichever is less.
And it can all, but it, it has to be locked and secured and there's also in there the nuisance, uh, aspects, odor, light, noise, um, that our ordinance office can use our existing ordinances to take care of if it gets out of hand. So all the concerns that you have all brought up are in there. I just want to make sure we're clear that this was in place long before anybody approached the township uh, on, on this issue. This is kind of, we were working toward this already.
Supervisor, if I may, I certainly understand that and I really appreciate your, your input here, uh, it, to make it more clear. Um, but again, there's no way of knowing how many caregivers we can have in one subdivision. There could be twenty, there could be thirty, you know, how do you become a caregiver? There is no record, so we're just assuming that they're caregivers and there's no checks and balances from what I'm hearing here because there's gray area here and I understand that. But I think it's something that we all need to be aware of going forward because there's going to be complaints and calls about, about, um, them not, our residents not being able to enjoy their property. And that was my point and I appreciate the work that you've done. So thank you for that.
Supervisor. So we're, um, are we ahead of the curve or behind the curve? It sounds like.
Probably ahead because this is a pretty new ruling.
Hmm. Uh, well, time will tell. We'll see what happens. Are there any communities around us who have had, um, you know, more marijuana growth, uh, facilities than they wanted? And they've tried to put a stop to it or?
I have to, I have to say yes, because I mean, I talked to Pat Williams in Canton and he didn't know anything about this. So obviously they, they had even started the, the process of getting this policy, uh, ordinance like this in place.
Well, obviously marijuana use, it must be on the increase. And like it or not, I guess in townships and cities, I, I, I'm not sure.
I'm not against marijuana use. Frankly, there's another reason why I'm, I'm for this ordinance. Because quite frankly, I don't want big business to move into, into the residential mira- medical marijuana thing. It's I hate to say it, but it's keeping a lot of homeowners support. Keeping the low guys pants.
I give the impression here, Kevin, that we're against medical marijuana. We're not. I'm just for the residents being able to enjoy their homes that live around these facilities. We need to be clear about that. I'm not against it. The re- the law was passed. I mean, the resident spoke when they passed this a few years ago. Not against it. I'm just looking at it from the complaint angles and everyone being able to live together and enjoy their properties. The caregivers and also our, our homeowners.
Yeah. Agreed. Anybody else? It's the first reading, so do we, do we actually take a vote on the first reading?
Yes. We, we approved the first reading. Yeah.
Uh, to the chair. I just, if I could, just, uh, to build on, on that, uh, last couple of comments. I think this year with the Supreme Court case that came forward, it's opening up the opportunity for communities to, to get a handle on something that um, in, in a way, they, they really had no, um, legal control over for years. And I think that's one thing that we're trying to take advantage of.
Cool. All right. All right, I know we had a motion by, I think it was Frazier, and I had a second by anybody who did second.
I did. Bud did.
Bud, okay. All right, so I've got a motion and I have a second. Hearing any further discussion? Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Uh, yes, trustee, trustee White, excuse, trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier?
Yes.
Treasure Bud?
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we're gonna move now to, uh, the big thing and, um, I'm gonna ask treasurer Bud if you would please make the, this motion.
Uh, make a motion to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two to adopt the Van Buren Township Master Plan for the requirements of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, PA thirty-three of two thousand and eight.
Support.
Okay. Director Power? And Adam Cook?
Yes, thank you again. And I believe Adam is attending tonight, so he is here as well to talk about this, this great effort. Um, I will give a broad overview again and I'll kind of describe, uh, the efforts that have been put forth, uh, over several years actually to date. Uh, and just remind the board about where they can find, uh, the master plan and, and master plan resources. Um, but I just want to start by commending the township on a, what has been a. Commending the township on a, what has been a multiple year effort. Uh, since the inception of this plan in twenty seventeen. Uh, the, the efforts first began on writing this plan and gathering feedback in twenty seventeen. So we've come a long way and we've gotten a, a lot of great feedback that went into this plan from the community. The, uh, master plan has. It's a, uh, document that has. An inventory of conditions in the township. The, uh, existing land use in the township. It gathers public input and public feedback. And it provides direction for the future of the community over the next twenty years in the form of. A future land use map. And a set of goals, objectives and action items. For the township. So, uh, there have been a number of public input efforts, including two surveys and two workshops in twenty nineteen that then led to. The drafting of the complete master plan document. In July of twenty twenty, the planning commission recommended. Forwarding the draft master plan for distribution, uh, and then the township board did the same thing. After two months of the plan, uh, being distributed to our neighboring, uh, municipalities and. Public service and utility jurisdictions. We then held a public hearing with the planning commission. The planning commission recommended to adopt. The master plan and had a resolution to adopt the master plan. And now the township board is being asked. To do the same. At this point, there are minor, uh, final touches being made so that the plan can be a, what, what's called an adoption copy document. And our master plan can consultant, Mr. Cook can speak to those final changes. Um, I hope the board has had a chance to look at the, uh, the pop-up page on the front of the website. There's a couple of links on that page, including sort of a. Interactive master plan portal and an interactive future land use map. And, uh, I'll be looking to the board and the planning commission. In the coming years, uh, just to get a better sense of how we can continue to make sure the plan is accessible. Uh, we don't want it to be something that sits on a shelf. It's, it's going to be something that guides. Rezoning decisions, uh, capital improvements decisions. And we want it to be accessible to you and the public. So I look forward to continuing to. Look at it as we move along. Uh, but perhaps at this point, Adam could give a, a little bit of an update on just. What some of these final steps are as we move toward adoption.
Okay, thank you, Director Power, and good evening, Supervisor McNamara and, uh, board members. Um. Uh, just to be brief, this is, um, you know, for those of us that do this, this is quite a momentous occasion. Um, and, uh. From John Jackson, who's the president of McKenna on down, we all want to thank you very much for, um, your help and cooperation in getting, uh, to, to, to this point. Um, so, uh. To get us to, uh, an adoption copy, um, what you have, uh, in front of you is the, uh. Unchanged version of the last, uh, draft of the, uh, master plan, which is dated July twenty twenty. Uh, based on the input we've received, which really is to say there's been no, um. No movement for a significant change or any substantive changes to the plan. Um, to get us to an actual official adoption copy, we'll be doing really three things. Uh, just one, a final read through of the, uh, text of the plan. So we're just looking at. Trying to find any last remaining typos, grammatical errors, um, polish of written content. So again, nothing substantive that affects policy direction in the document. Um, we, uh, are looking at stylistic updates to the future land use map, some of the other mapping exhibits. Again, I say stylistic, that simply means. Uh, moving or reciting content that is already, uh, shown on those maps such as footnotes or, um. You know, particular, um, particular things such as that. We're not changing anything that actually affects, uh, future land use direction or any other. Um, substantive content, uh, on those maps. And then last but not least, uh, the last thing we do is we, uh, finalize an acknowledgements page. Uh, and of course, a table of contents page so that, uh, that reflects final pagination of the document. Um, and, uh, I know Director Power will be circulating those draft acknowledgements, uh, to everybody just so, you know, we can ensure that you're, uh, you're credited properly. And that your name is, uh, name spelled correctly. Um, and so with those last few minor adjustments, um, you'll be ready to go with the twenty twenty master plan, which, um. I think we're very confident will, uh, guide Van Buren Township over the coming years in a really, uh, exciting and positive direction. So, uh, again, another note of thanks to all of you.
Okay. Alright, so we've been going through the master plan now for four years. Treasurer Bud, for four years you've been living it. So go ahead, you'd start.
Well, it, it's been a process. Um, and sometimes the process didn't go very far, but once, um. Thankful once Adam and his, some of his rest of his staff got, were able to get back on board. I think we moved ahead. I think the committee did a good job of. Of, of working with these people. I think it was good to see the community came out when we had the open houses. So I think that works. So I guess, uh, my hat's off to Adam, his crew, to Dan Power and all of our building people that did an excellent job. Thank you very much.
I was very impressed with how many people from the community actually came out and. Played games like pin the tail on the map or commercial and, uh, you know, all the cute little things they had there that I liked that. Would anybody else like to comment?
Uh, one quick comment. I appreciate the effort that so many made in, uh, working on this plan because it, it's really about. The community and identifying what's important and how to protect. Our assets and it takes into account the workforce and, you know, the local area, our parks, so many things are looked at and. The public in our, I'm sorry, our residents. Went in full force, participated alongside the board. It was, uh, it's a great memory that I will have forever and that I'll cherish. And, uh, it brought you closer to the residents. So I appreciate all the work that's gone on the last few years and making this a success.
Okay, anybody else want to comment? You know, this process actually did give us quite a few other little things. It did teach us how to work better with the, with the community. How to, how to do interactive things. It brought us the redevelopment ready plan that actually. Did expand things and actually kind of was the forerunner to our community involvement stuff that we're doing now. Um, so it wasn't just this plan that, that helped us out. It was a lot of other things that we learned along the way. You're right, Reggie.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Very none. I have a motion by Treasurer Bud. It's been supported by Trustee Miller. Hearing no further discussion. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll? You're on mute.
I gotta unmute myself. Trustee Fraser? Trustee Fraser? Raise your hand.
Yes, yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes, absolutely.
Trustee White is excused. Clerk Wright boasts, yes. Treasure Bud?
Yes.
Supervisor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to our final, um, agenda item, which is discussion, uh, to consider approval of the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Can I get a motion?
Supervisor, I make a motion on the discussion on and, and to consider approval of resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-five, the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Support.
Oh, I got you.
Alright, you got it right.
Hey!
You got the last one. Alright, um, I'm trying to be fair here. Okay, uh, Fire Marshal McInally, are you on the line? I called you earlier. I know you're here.
There he is.
There you go.
Yes, thank you. Um, resolution is something that, uh, has to be done every six years and, uh, the reason that the. Uh, resolution comes up is because it puts us in place for, uh, federal disaster funding. Uh, if Wayne County, uh, runs across something similar to like the floods that were up north, uh, you know, the Bay City area and so forth. That was discussed on the emergency management meeting today. This plan has been accepted by FEMA. So that has already been approved and now each municipality needs to actually approve it. Uh, by resolution and then send it back. And then we will be, uh, party to any possible funding in the future if there's a disaster.
This isn't got anything to do with FEMA.
It's FEMA funding for, for a disaster because it's part of a countywide plan. Uh, the plan, basically each municipality picks hazards that they need to mitigate and so forth. And what was in our plan, if you saw in there. Uh, was actually the siren system was one of the hazards that was identified years ago. And that was put in there. And once we identify and we show we completed, now we can come back and we'll reassess and put some future. Uh, mitigation hazards for the next plan. But as long as we continue to do this and adopt it and so forth, if funding comes through, we're able to, uh, be a part of that if it, if it affects us.
Okay.
Supervisor.
Just to Fraser.
I'd just like to say I appreciate our being, uh, um. Director McInally being proactive and getting us, uh. You know, involved in this plan because you never know what's out there and what's going to happen. I think we have to be prepared for all, uh, all things.
Anybody else? Supervisor? Trustee Martin?
Yeah, I was going through the plan and I, and I came upon the, uh. The section where they talked about dams. And as you know, we have the French Landing Dam here in the township. And they deem that to be, uh, a high risk, uh, dam for, for failure. And we all remember what happened, uh, with the Eatonville and Sanford Dams. Last year or so, and my concern is. You've assessed this to be a high risk. And so what is, what are we, what are we doing about it? What is, what is the plan to?
I am going to have our director best answer your question because we have been doing things about it. Director Best?
Well, we, we not privy to what you've been doing, so we need to know.
And I bet you said things, but yeah.
Sure, sure. Uh, trustee Martin, let me, let me first say that the assessment that it's a high hazard dam. Is, is made by, uh, FERC and is also made by the state of Michigan. And it's not based on the safety of the dam. It's not based on the quality or the current status or. Um, condition of the dam. It's actually based on. The impact of what would happen downstream if something failed. So it, the area downstream, uh, of the dam, if there is high potential for, uh, damage or loss of life. Because of the, uh, the failure of the dam, it is deemed a high hazard dam. So. There are a lot of brand new dams that are top of the line that are qualified as high hazard dams. So, um, that are, they're state of the art, but because of their potential impact, if they fail. Uh, they're deemed high hazards. That's the first thing. Um, the second thing is, uh, according to the latest, uh, reports and. That I've been able to review under, uh, the, um. Working relationship we have with Eagle Creek, our, uh, our operator of the dam as well as. Uh, seeing our FERC reports that they submit. The dam is in good condition and is working as constructed to, as it's supposed to. Uh, it is in current upkeep. In fact, um, we submitted a, um. Uh, payment, and I think it's in this month's, um, or this board meeting's, uh. Uh, voucher list. For the repairs that were done, the yearly maintenance that's, or sub, it's like every two years or so where we repair the. Um, embankments with rip rap. So there's about. Uh, sixty thousand dollars worth of, uh, maintenance and repairs that were done on the embankments on the ups, the upstream side of the dam on the lakeside. There's also been, uh, several inspections of the dam by FERC and the state of Michigan. Uh, for, uh, uh, various items that are part of our permit with FERC and the state. The last, uh, inspections show that the dam is in good, 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 good repair and working as intended. We are actually in the process, uh, working with Eagle Creek right now. To renew the permit. Our permit renewal takes years. Uh, and the permit renewal process starts next year. So Eagle Creek is working with the state of Michigan and the FERC Federal. Energy Regulatory Commission. To, uh, renew our permit. And so. Um, hopefully that answers a lot of your questions. Um, I know that our dam operator. Uh, is one of the best in the business and daily does inspections. Um, and at any point, if any of the trustees would like to go out and see the dam and go inside it and poke around, we'd be happy to set up. Uh, a time to go out there with them and, and to see it and, and learn all about it and why, why. We have one of the best, uh, dam systems that, in the area.
Maybe this spring, that would be a good field trip for all of us.
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, uh. Director Best for that clarification because. You know, just looking at it, you would, you would think that. It is, uh, it says high risk that it may be subject to failure or whatever, but thank you for clearing that up. So we. We can rest. Our minds can rest at ease that the dam is safe, the dam is working as. As, as is supposed to and, uh. I appreciate your, uh, clarification.
You're welcome.
Actually here on township.
Yeah, we actually went after reports and updates from engineers the day after the Sanford Dam because I knew darn well that that was going to be an issue. So we're in pretty good shape there. We really are, so.
Good to know.
Yeah. Um.
One question, if I may?
Sure.
So the people that live around that dam, and I know that high risk is attributed to density, population density. So are those residents, um. Required to purchase, and I don't know if required is the right word, um, additional flood insurance?
I'll, I'll answer this one, Mac, as you may answer it wrong.
Did I ask something I should know?
Probably.
They'll be moving.
Supervisor.
I didn't hear the question. She was breaking up. I didn't.
The answer is, no, they're, no, they are not unless their mortgage company allows them to, but Van Buren Township is an opt-out for the flood insurance.
What, what does that mean?
That means that they don't have any right to come in here and charge people thousands and thousands of dollars because that they determine that they're in a, they're in a flooded area.
Thank you for that. That's important.
Well, they, they constantly call me every year and every year I tell them, no.
But it's up to the individual homeowner if he wants flood insurance or not.
And if they can get it, they should take it.
I don't know about that.
Is, is your flood insurance in, in areas that they determine to be a flood insurance area. Your flood insurance usually is higher than your mortgage insurance. Your mortgage payment. So, uh, my sister pays about eight thousand dollars a year and she has never had a flood within a mile of her. And everybody in her four hundred home subdivisions never had a flood.
Hmm, interesting.
Same amounts.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
And I think most of you will remember, and it's been a number of years ago now, we had to fight for our residents because they were told they were in a flooded. Zone and they were going to be charged this kind of money. And we had our township engineers and, uh, we did quite a program to see that those residents didn't get stuck with that. Those kinds of bills.
Right. Yeah, I remember that share.
Yep.
Yep. Coming back.
So I'm fighting that from expanding into our area. I'm not fighting it. I'm just saying, no, I'm not helping.
One of, one of the things that, uh, to, just to add on to trustee Miller's question, the. Areas that are impacted in the township, they're very limited. Uh, they're right on the border of, uh, the township. Uh, on, along the, uh. Huron River. And I think it's five houses, but it's not their houses. It's just the properties. And, um, those areas aren't called flooding areas. They're called inundation zones. And we just, uh. Fire Marshal McInally, myself and the rest of public safety went through, uh, along with the supervisor, went through the re, uh. Revamping of our emergency action plan if something does go wrong. And some of those areas were looked at, targeted, um, evaluated again. And so we have a, um. Brand new, fully revised and reviewed. Emergency action plan that we practiced and we're ready to go if something does happen. So, um, there's only, I think, five, I think. I think it's only five properties. But that's the limit in the township.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
But I have a motion and I have support. Hearing no further questions, clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Yes, trustee White is excused. Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Fraser?
Yes.
Treasure Bud?
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Alright, thank you very much. Um. Moving on, we have reports. We have none that are due today. Public comment on anything? Public comment on anything out there that they wanna make a comment on, please feel free to come on out. Now's your time. Moderator?
I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay. Word comments on non-agenda items, is there anybody? Reggie Miller?
Yes. Um, I'm so sorry that Paul White could not join us this evening. And I think it's important that we express our sincere appreciation to the outgoing trustee because it, he took his time, his skills, he gave up family, personal time, you all know that to, for the betterment of our township, whether you agreed with him or not on on how he went about it. It, it's a complete and lack of respect sometimes. It's a thankless job. And it's important that we recognize each other and also those that are leaving the board. And we need to welcome our newest member as well, and because it, we know what he'll go through as well. It's, it's a lot of sacrifice here. And I wanna thank the voters at this time for re-electing all of us. I think we have the compassion and the chemistry to bring this township forward and to keep going. And um, I cherish each and every one of you. And Sherri Bud once told me back in two thousand and twelve, Reggie, you're gonna learn just how hard this job really is. And she did not go into enough detail on that. We all need to be there for our new member, and I welcome him and I thank all of you for serving. And although those equally who ran and stepped up and wanted to serve our township, so thank you, everyone.
To the chair?
Yes, Treasury Bud.
Um, yeah. I would also uh, make the same kind of a statement that Reggie had. It's been, it's a challenge, but it's a challenge that I know I've welcomed, and I think all of you welcome because you have run again. And so uh, once again, I would like to thank the clerk and all of his staff and all of the people that stepped forward to help with all the elect, the account clerks that stepped forward and and helped make this election successful and helped make us all where we are today. And it was uh, it was a good job done by his office and the staff and everybody that pitched in. So um, clerk Wright, thank you very much. Uh, thank you to all that we're all gonna serve together again, and we will pull through this together. And hopefully, we will be stronger because of it.
To the chair?
To the chair. Clerk Wright, uh, clerk Martin, clerk Wright and then Martin?
Yeah, I get, I would like to echo both trustee, I mean trustee Miller and Treasury Bud sentiments. Some of us, I think we, I I, I made a statement, I think, early after the two thousand sixteen election. I I stated that I thought that the board was capable of doing great things together. And we have. As always, uh, politics is a challenge and always will be, we see what's going on in country now. But it, and I I always take my hat off to anyone that steps up into this arena because it's not an easy task to put your name on a piece of paper and ask people to to vote for you. Uh, I would like to thank uh, trustee White for his years of service. And because I, like trustee Miller said, uh, we, we live in a democracy where you have the right to speak, speak your opinions and whether and and they should be respected. And I think that's the way that's the way democracy works, and that's the way we should work. I look forward to working with everyone, congratulations to everyone that saw on the, on the reelections. Uh, I'd like to congratulate uh, trustee Boyne. And I think he would do a great job coming in. And again, I'm gonna make another prediction that I think that we had, the board, upcoming board has potentials to do greater things together. And I predict that we will. I think we have, we'll have a good camaraderie. I, and uh, I look forward to working with all of you.
Uh, trustee Martin?
Yeah, thank you. I would also like to thank trustee White, his, his zeal and his passion uh, served the township well, he was a true guardian of the township. And I would also like to take the time to thank all the veterans out there. We recently celebrated Veterans Day last uh, last Wednesday. And clerk Wright, who was a, one of our esteemed veterans, as I am myself. And I would just like to thank them for their sacrifice, the time that they spend away from their families, the passion that they, that they have for, for being a patriot. And I I am forever grateful and thankful, and they always will be held in my highest esteem. You're here.
Trustee Frazier, did you have anything to say? You're the only one that hasn't spoke before I go.
I'd just like to echo uh, my fellow uh, trustees and the clerks' comments that uh, I'm grateful to live in such a um, positive community that wants the best for its residents and is always interested in moving forward. I really appreciate every resident and the part that they play. And we can't do better than that.
Oh, the places we'll go.
Yes, as Dr. Seuss would say.
Anyway, I, yeah, I I'm also very thankful, I'm thankful that I got elected, I'm thankful that you guys got elected. I know that, you know, I I keep on telling my people, when they tell us to slow down, I keep on saying, you know, you only get four years. And COVID kinda shot us in the arm for, for some of that time, but you know, we got four more years and it's tough to crawl with COVID. But um, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna try and do some amazing things. Now, I, I believe that trustees and any elected officials should get something when they leave, quite frankly. So I mean, um, you know, I, so I I did arrange to have a plaque to say
So nice.
Uh, trustee Paul White for his service as a township trustee. So on behalf of the board and on behalf of the people of Van Buren Township, this plaque will be, it will be mailed off to him uh, so that he has something to, oh, you know, remember his time here, so.
And let's not forget that he was supervisor also.
Yeah, well, you're supervisor here, yes.
Yes.
It's not my plaque job, that was somebody else's plaque job.
Okay.
Just so you know, I did, I did try calling him again, I didn't, I'm not getting the answer, so I hope, hopefully everything's okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping he's okay too, cuz it's not like, not show up.
He did a great job for the township, and I'm sure he will continue to be involved in the township.
He's deserving of the recognition tonight.
Oh, definitely.
Okay. All right, well, I have nothing else to say, I guess we're in line for adjournment now.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
I have support, hearing nobody saying no, we are adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, be safe.
You too.
Same to you.
Bye-bye.
All right.